Good evening, welcome to the July 11th, 2018, meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We have a quorum present, so we'll call a meeting to order. First item on tonight's agenda is to elect a Chair and Vice Chair for 2018 and 2019. At this time, I'll turn the meeting over to Mr. Blomley.
Thank you Chairman Lamb, and good evening Chairman Lamb and members of the Planning Commission. As our rules of procedure state, every first meeting in July, we are to elect the Chair and Vice Chair of the Planning Commission for the remainder of the fiscal year until the next July. And so, I will ask that, or I will ask the floor for nominations for Chair and Vice Chair, and any discussion on that, and we'll vote on that, and once we have a Chair, I will turn the meeting over to that Chair.
Mr. Blomley, I'd like to nominate Bob to be returning as our Chair.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. What are the wishes of the Planning Commission?
Aye.
I'm not used to this. All in favor say aye. That's why we need a seasoned veteran as the Chairman of the Planning Commission. I am not fit out, fit for that role. And now, now we'll take a motion for the Vice Chair.
I make a motion that we nominate Kurt Wade for Vice Chair.
Second?
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Thank you, and I will turn it over to our Chair.
How come I didn't get to the Vice Chair?
I'm sorry.
Just kidding. Moving right along, the next item is to approve the minutes of the June 6th, 2018 Planning Commission meeting. Are there any additions or corrections to those meeting minutes? My allergies are working on me tonight. If not, we're ready for a motion.
Make a motion we approve the minutes.
Second?
All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. We have five public hearings scheduled this evening, the first of which is a zoning application for approximately .17 acres located along North Church Street and Olive Street to be rezoned from RM12 to PRD, known as the Flats at Olive Street. Shane McFarland Construction LLC is applicant. Ms. Ely, good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening. Our first public hearing this evening is for you to consider an application that we've received to rezone approximately .17 acres that's located along the corner of North Church Street and Olive Street, as shown on the map, in the area shaded orange, from its current zone, which is multifamily residential district, RM12, to PRD Planned Residential District. And included in the packet is a program book for the Flats at Olive Street, which is the PRD program book that comes along with this plan. The properties to the north, the east and south are also zone multifamily residential district, as well as across the street is a more, a higher density multifamily district, RM16, and properties zoned OGR, which is General Office District Residential. The request is to change this property to PRD to allow the construction of two, two-family dwelling units, so that there will be two structures, and for a total of four dwelling units on this one lot of record. The current zoning would not permit the development as proposed, particularly because the development is proposing to have a much reduced setback of four feet from the property line, the front property lines, and part of the area, and five feet for the rest of the area. Also requested with this zoning is an exception to our minimum number of parking spaces, and you can see that in the book, as well as an exception to the perimeter planting yard requirement. The current density that would be permitted on this lot is 12 dwelling units per acre if it met certain size criteria. The four units on this one lot is a density of 23.5 dwelling units per acre, so you can see that it's basically double the density, although it's four units. The map also indicates an area in blue that's the right-of-way proposed to be zoned PRD upon abandonment. There is a, what appears to be an alley, at least partially along the back of these lots. It's not along the, directly contiguous to this, and we have some correspondence, early correspondence that indicates the city doesn't utilize that alley, and so we would look to abandon it and take formalized action in the future. But we did want to point out to you that that was half of the alley that was originally plotted. The Murfreesboro 2035 Land Use Plan does recommend that this property develop with an auto-urban general residential character. Of course, the land use plan is not a future zoning map, but is a future character map, basically tells you the character of the development that should be in this area. And what is indicated as auto-urban general residential is proposed to be duplexes, triplexes, patio homes, the type of homes that you would see having a decreased setback, much like you would see in an urban area with urban character or downtown areas, so little to no building setback. They would have a strong pedestrian orientation at the sidewalk level, and these would be designed with intensive use to draw people into close contact where congestion and personal encounters are both expected and essential for vibrant community. So we believe that the type of use is still consistent with the future land use map. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. At this time, I'd like to invite Rob Mulchan to the lectern to go through the specifics of the plan.
Good evening Chairman Lamb, members of the Planning Commission. Rob Mulchan of the SEC here tonight on behalf of Shane McFarland Construction presents to you the Flats of Olive Street. Mark and Ann talked about this is located in the northeast corner of Olive Street and North Church Street, just north of downtown Murfreesboro. As you can see here in the aerial photography, the site is located in the pink and white checkered square rectangle to the northeast corner of the intersection. Zoning, as Mark and Ann alluded to, is also RM12, as you can see RM16 and Cross Street, and the Office General Residential is catty corner to the site itself. That's the Rutherford County Health Department on that corner. Land use plan, as we talked about, is auto-urban general, so we are staying in tune with the residential character of what the land use map is calling for. I'll go through a couple of quick slides, give you an orientation about the site itself. This is a view looking from Church Street onto the property itself. It's a vacant lot. This is a view from Olive Street looking back on the property itself, adjacent property structure next door. These are a couple of views of the homes that are located on the, around this intersection. As you can see, the different character of all the homes. And of course, the Health Department is also located on the other corner. Couple of views of the streets, as you can see, this is a view of Church Street looking north, and this is Church Street looking south, give you a little character about the street character that's out there. And again, this is Olive Street, and this is looking east-west, as you look down by the Health Department, and back east, looking along the property itself on the left-hand side. Last thing for tonight is PRD zoning to incorporate four single-family attached homes on this one lot of record. This will be roughly about 23 dwelling units per acre. This is two buildings with two units each inside. The, this will be, that'd be sold under horizontal property regime. The property itself, as you can see in the plan, is to have this one building on the left facing out into Church Street, so there'll be two residences facing out into Church Street. The other building will be oriented towards Olive Street with parking for garages and such underneath the actual structures themselves, so these cars will be parked inside the garages. The garages will be restricted via the covenants to vehicular only uses on that side, so no parking outside the garage on that side either. You can see we're also incorporating and installing a sidewalk along Olive Street. There's currently not a sidewalk along Olive Street, so we're looking at adding that sidewalk to help with pedestrian connectivity along this. The property itself has been in the McFarland family since the 1920s. It's been vacant for the last few years, but it was a single structure on that, on that lot, which was sat vacant for about five years until they pulled the, pulled the structure off the property, which had no HVAC and was also in very bad shape, so they felt it was best to condemn it and take it down. In regards to the project itself, they were looking for an opportunity to do something better than just what an RM12 lot could do in regards to the RM12 zoning. They wanted to do something that had a little more character and a little more pizzazz in regards to the forthcoming potential downtown overlay district, so this would be fitting in character with that downtown overlay district, once that does come about, once the council approves that. Moving forward and look at some of the architectural character, this is the front elevation, so this'll be what you see from Church Street and also from Olive Street. So this is the front, you can see the two front doors on the first level. This is a three-story plus a upper story above the actual residential, that's a outdoor terrace area on the top. So as you can see, the pergolas and such on top, there'll also be outdoor gas fireplaces up there. So this is more or less the outdoor space for these units, being as tight quarters as this site has. The actual outdoor space will actually be on the upper stories, so have an overlook down on the streetscape in the neighborhood on that side. So as you can see, the character is somewhat, somewhat classical in essence on that side. You can see the mostly brick facade, the main, middle unit is a, or like a hardy board type material that'll be there for an accent element to add some character to the actual fronts of these buildings on that side. And go through a couple of the elevations, this is one of the side elevations, you can see all masonry, all brick, all the way up. And as you can see on the top there, you can see the little terrace area up there with the pergola, and you can also see in the background, the fireplace area up there and the door for access to the terraces on these units. This is a view of the other side, same look, same character, and again, you can see the terrace on the upper side. And this is the rear of the units, this is the unit, look what the rear looks like with the two, with the two car garages for each of the units on that. Again, all masonry, and again, you can see the terraces on the rooftop. Again, talking about materials, they will all be, this will all be all masonry type product on all elevations. The front side will be mainly brick with hardy board or cement board. The sides, rears will all be primarily all brick with some, with opportunities for cementation as fiberboard and/or stone accents incorporated in the architecture. Vinyl will only be permitted in trim and sofa type areas. This is just a view across, couple of cross-sections to show you kind of what the inside of the actual units will look like, and so you can see the garages on the left-hand side, you can see the garage structure, taking you the staircase from the front door up to the ma, up to the first floor with the kitchen area, and then again, moving up to the second floor above the kitchen, which is actually the third story, will be more like the living quarters, bedrooms and such like that. And then again, the next set of scissor staircases that take you up to the rooftop terraces on that. So that kind of gives you an idea and a little character and feel of what the inside of these structures are gonna look like. As part of this, as we talked about, we'll be incorporating foundation, we, Mark and Ann talked about the reduced setbacks down to four feet, so we're getting this into a very true urban character, but along that four-foot front elevation along both the public streets, will be landscape beds, they'll be landscaped with different types of evergreen materials and deciduous materials and flowers and such to help with the beautification of the project along the streetscape. We'll also be incorporating, based on the, on this compact nature, we've asked the exception to go ahead and waive the perimeter planting requirements with this because of the very tight quarters that this project is and getting this, on this very small site where there was an opportunity to make the usual planting requirements along the edges. And then we'll also be incorporating along the north, which is on the right-hand side of this image here, the north and eastern sides will incorporate a six-foot tall PVC privacy fence to more or less help separate the vehicular portion of this development in regards to the cars pulling in on the garages with the adjacent neighbor to the north and our neighbors to the east on that. I appreciate your time and consideration to this project, and I'm available for any questions now or after the public hearing. Thank you.
Any questions from the Planning Commission from Mr. Mulchan? Thank you, Rob.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing at this time. Now, if you have not been to one of our public hearings before, what I'll do is open the public hearing, invite anybody to come to the podium that'd like to speak either for or against a proposal. If you would, make all your comments to the Planning Commission and not to the staff or the other members of the audience. State your name and give your address when you come to the podium, so we'll have that for the record, and keep your comments to no more than three minutes if you would, so everybody gets a chance to speak tonight. All that being said, I'll open the public hearing, ask anybody to come forward that would like to speak.
Good evening, my name is Steve Baughman. I live at 315 North Manny, just a few blocks from this development. Overall, I like to see the revitalization of this downtown area. I know there's been several attempts to do things like this in the past. My objection to this particular project is the density and actual number of units and the cars that are involved with that. Just the general layout that I saw, is this gonna be a person living there, a small family, two cars, or is this gonna be a rental? My experience with rentals, if it goes into a rental, if it's one person in there with two bedrooms, it's gonna have two cars, even though that the, that's for one unit. So in that, all of a sudden, you've got a lot of cars and traffic, as well as the whole streetscape with it being right onto the sidewalk. What that whole neighborhood is, I would like to see more of a setback and more of a grass area, more of a lawn that's in tune with the rest of the neighborhood, although in general, I'm for overall revitalization, but not with this density in such a small lot. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Baughman. Nobody? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing. Questions or comments from members of the Planning Commission?
Mr. Chairman, I wanted to ask Mr. Mulchan a little bit more about the, basically the facades on the, on the buildings, so from the sides. You know, it just looks like this spans of solid brick space. Are there gonna be any, like, little insetts, or is it just straight solid walls? Is there anything to add to the character of the building?
The elevations on these sides is pretty much primarily a brick wall with the windows and other elements there that actually will make the accents to the actual brick on this. The, with the nature of this unit being as square as it is, there isn't a lot of room for articulation in regards to the architecture on it. You know, this is a, you know, all masonry type product, the, the windows and the, you know, and such will help make accent to the structure, but there isn't any actual true articulation to the actual edges themselves on this, on this model that they're coming forth with the project.
So the, the windows that are showing on the left and right side that are shuttered looking, are those actually just shuttered, are they really windows, or would those open? Are they closed shutters, or?
Those are, I think those are actual, they can be, they can be open and closed, if I'm not mistaken, on the architecture on that, so I can verify with the architect, he's not here tonight to answer that question for me, but I can verify whether or not those are actually movable shutters on those as well.
Rob, how do we have any assurance, or to Mr. Baughman's question about the whole parking piece, 'cause I kind of would agree with him. If this turned rental, you could have more than two cars, I mean, where, they're gonna have to park in the street, correct?
Correct, and then if I'm not mistaken, Church Street is wide enough and has actually on-street parking allowed along it, so it'd be just like any of the existing homes along the street itself would utilize that outdoor space, because most of the homes along Church Street either have the driveway or, or port of share that goes to a garage in the backside, so there is room for some parking on the lots, but the majority of their guest spaces and such would be out on the street and along, along, along Church Street on that side. Olive Street is too narrow to handle on-street parking, but Church Street is definitely set up for on-street parking.
But, so then you're talking about potentially, if you had two bedrooms in each one, and if they were rental, then you might possibly have four people in each unit? Four cars per unit?
If it was a rental, and these are for sale units, so I mean, not to say that they could, you know, you know, these are for sale units, they're being sold in a horizontal property regime, so they're not up for being a rental on that side, but you know, there is that opportunity that, that could be, you know, somebody could rent it out, but I mean, unless it's, it's set in restrictions, and I believe they were, set this in the restrictions that these could not be rental units.
Say that one more time, you're saying the restrictions are gonna say that they're not rental units, or?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So you're gonna be barred from renting, is that what you're saying?
I will need to confer with my client, but that's, that was my understanding, but I can't make that a promise at this moment in time, so.
I don't think we have the right to determine that, I, or do we? Because I mean, in the nicest neighborhood in Murfreesboro, you can't keep a person from renting their house, can we?
Yes, you can.
You can, I don't know that we can prescribe that, but in private covenants, they can put covenants on that would preclude an owner from renting. And if it's done, done properly, anyway, those have been enforced, not by us, not by the city, but they can be enforced as any other restrictive covenant.
That's our restrictive covenant.
Yeah, right. Right, now, we can't require them to do that, I don't believe. In fact, I know we can't, but, but they can do it, and if they do it, and if, and if they're done correctly, and I'm not, I would assume that the developer here would have the appropriate legal counsel to, to write the restrictions correctly so that they could, would be enforceable, and then, and, and that covenant will be enforced if.
Yeah, Rob, do you have any idea what these units would sell for, roughly?
Mr. McFarland has stated that these are looking to be around $400,000 per unit, so they are some.
Something typically that somebody would invest into for a rental property.
For a rental property, yes.
Yeah.
Any other questions, Ms. Charles?
Yes, sir, what about the reference to an optional wooden fence? So, who's option?
We, before, but when we, when we last submitted the book, it was said as an optional, when Mr. McFarland came back this week after we resubmitted the book and said that this was gonna be installed, so when the next version of the book comes out, if this moves forward to council, it will be reverted as there will be a fence installed along those two peripheries.
Along which?
The north and east, so that's, that's adjacent to the existing house just to the north on Church Street, and then to the side where the right-of, the abandonment for the right-of-way for the alleyway is on that side, so those would be the two nearest property owners to the project.
But is it, is the fence just covering where the cars are pulling in, or is it?
No, it runs from, if you're looking at the plan itself, from the front of the unit that runs from Church Street all the way down that property line in the back corner, and then from the back corner back out to Olive.
Okay.
So it's a full-length fence all the way down that property line from the front of the building.
Will it line up with the front, that would be the northwest corner of the building on Church?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Any other questions?
Would it be better not to go so close to the road with the fence? Would it be better to stop at the front line of the house on the property on Church Street?
Oh, the adjacent property owner?
Right.
Yeah, I mean, we could, you know, if, you know, we just felt that we wanted to bring it all the way up on our property line to help with, you know, you know, with our property versus their property on that side, and having that separation. I mean, we were really putting it up more or less from the standpoint of the vehicular uses going on behind these units and the cars pulling into these driveways to get into those garages, really blocking the headlights from going in the neighbor's yard. We just felt that we wanted to do, you know, be a good neighbor and extend that fence all the way out to the end of our structure, but I mean, I understand your point in regards to just pulling it back to where the existing house next door goes.
And I guess when you draw these up, I mean, like, so you know that a car can pull in and pull into these garages the way with the, the space that we're talking about right here?
Yes, ma'am, you've got, you've got your typical kind of back-out zone, there's a 22-foot wide opening coming out to Olive Street, so you got another, you know, five feet, so you got 27 feet of back-out space, which is, which is a pretty good-sized back-out space when it comes to any like side-entry garage structure in a house. Most builders usually put those in at about 25 foot from the garage space to the end of the drive, the end of that pavement, so that vehicles can pull out of, out of a garage and then head down the driveway to head out the street, so we're providing the same amount of space, if not a little bit more, than what a typical builder would do on a, a single-family detached lot.
The, the neighbor on North Church Street, how close it, from looking at the information in our design booklet here, it looks like the house is, goes right to the property line.
It's one of those things with, with the GIS information and the way satellite photography and the GIS information lines up, it's not exact in regards to that, so when you look at the graphics on here, the way that the computers pull everything together, there is a lot of, some times you look at it, there is a little bit of some fudge factor in there, so it, it looks like it's sitting on top of the property line, but when you actually go out on the, on the property, you survey it, it's about five feet off the property line from the property line to that port of share that's on the side of the existing.
So I didn't, I wouldn't want a fence built right up next to the neighbor's house.
You'd build it blocking their windows, I guess, if it was right next to their house.
Well, if it's five feet, I could say that would be okay.
Yeah, and in this house, the house to the north on us has that, like I said, has that port of share going along, extends out from the actual house. The actual dwelling unit is actually probably about another 12 feet over from where that edge of that port of share starts to get through there, because they, they have access to, you see the image back there, they have their parking shed and towards the backside of their property over there, so there's actually a driveway that comes in that port of share, and they actually pull their vehicles through towards that backside of the lot, so.
Okay, Mr. Smotherman brought up a good point about bringing it to, which one we want to bring it to, the front of the proposed building or to the front corner of the existing home there, so we need to make a decision about that.
I, I think it would be advantageous to us to stop at the front of the existing house, because it kind of gives them an extended front yard almost. And are you planning on closing that off so that it's not an alleyway going back up through there?
Um, I, we haven't discussed that, but we can definitely look at that as being an option, putting a gate on there or something like that to kind of, you know, close that off, so it's more privatization to the backside of that over there.
Right, I, I don't think you want that to be a cut-through.
Okay. We'll, we'll move it back to the front of the existing home next door, and we'll also put a gate on that, so it closes it off, so like you said, it's not a breezeway for people to wander through, it's a shortcut around the corner on that side.
Okay, good.
Where are you talking about?
Right here, next between the house and the back of the building.
Uh-huh.
If they would close that fence off when it comes through there, you don't have an alleyway coming back up through that.
Yes, gotcha.
Okay, any other questions?
I, I mean, I don't have a question, I just have a comment. I think we're gonna see more and more of this coming downtown. My, my concern is, and I, and I get that there's a place to park on Church Street, but let's just say, if, if any of these do go rental and, and being conservative, you have, say, three cars a unit, well, you're still looking at four cars having to park on the street, not much less if there was two vehicles per bedroom, or two vehicles per, excuse me, four vehicles per unit. I just, I mean, I, I just feel like we're gonna have more of this coming, and, and we're, we may be setting ourselves up where we're gonna have more and more people parking on the street, and we're not gonna have a, a way to, to manage it. And in Olive Street, there's no way, I go down that street from time to time, you're exactly right, you couldn't, you couldn't get past it if there was a car parked on Olive Street.
Correct, and, you know, with us putting these driveways in here too, also helps preclude the opportunity for, you know, much parking along Olive Street, even if it was a wider type of situation.
Yeah. So it's up to the applicant to dictate the covenants, is that what I heard you say?
If they choose to, and, you know, I get, normally the applicant, the developer is not required to put covenants on a property like this. I think particularly if it's gonna be a condominium regime, then they, there would be condominium, ineffective, ineffective be covenants, the condominium provisions. And, and it's, it's not real common to prohibit rentals, but it's certainly not uncommon. It, it does, and I think in a. rentals, but it's certainly not uncommon, it, it does, and I think in a development such as this, it might be more likely that, that that would be a provision they would want to put in than in a normal subdivision.
For what you're selling them for, as a buyer, I might like it more that the fact that they can't, the next-door neighbor can't rent it out, I mean, I'm just saying that, but.
But I, I did think that we had, in planned developments before, that we had gotten, you know, assurances from developers that they would, that they would put that in their, you know, in their covenants, that they, you know, in different things, not necessarily just rental, but we have gotten assurances from the developers regarding their restrictive covenants before we would approve certain plans.
Owner-occupied.
We, we have, and it's, it is perhaps legally questionable, we have done it, you know, there is a general prohibition against contract zoning, there is a, conditional zoning is allowed, and it's somewhat of a fine line between contractual zoning and conditional zoning, we have, I guess I'd say from time to time, encouraged or suggested that a particular type of covenant might be appropriate, and I think developers have frequently come back and, and decided that was a good idea, and incorporated that into their development, if, you know, whether we could refuse approval based simply on someone not putting in a covenant of that nature, you know, might be questionable, but that, then you're in court, and we, none of us want to go there, but, you know, it, we, council and commission have encouraged those kinds of provisions.
In our legal meetings in Nashville where we've discussed this topic, it, it has always seemed to have been the opinion that we can't require restrictive covenants, nor do we have any obligation to enforce restrictive covenants, or ability to.
Well, certainly we have no ability to enforce them.
Right, so.
Because it, it is a private contract matter, now, now, to, to the extent that there are zoning provisions incorporated into a planned development, those may be enforceable, but, you know, I don't know that, while we've talked about restrictive covenants, I don't know that we've ever actually put into a planned development a zoning provision of, of that nature that would have, that would prevent.
I think there's a good example.
We certainly prevented uses where, you know, that we have, as a part of a planned development, said, for example, you can't put a pawn shop in a, in a development, and certainly if someone did, we, that would be a zoning violation that we as a city could seek to enforce.
I, I would, I think there's a very good example on page 12, looking, the view looking north on Church Street, where you can see cars actually parked on the side of Church Street there, there, there may be a situation where we need to evaluate whether or not we need to have parking on one side of the roadway only as density continues to increase in this area, because I think it's inevitable that we're going to see increases, but we also don't want to impede the traffic flow of Church Street and Maple Street and some of the other streets in this area, so maybe we need to go in and look as, at the opportunity to determine whether or not we would have parking on one side of the roadway only, because I don't think there's a problem at all with a car parking on the side of the road of Church Street, it's just if both sides of the street were parked on, then all of a sudden you've got the road narrowed down to the point that it's going to start impeding traffic, so probably something as far as the interior design of the city that we need to look at and evaluate, maybe this is an opportunity to, to maintain the traffic flow as well as accommodate the increases in density, which I think are going to continue to gumble for us.
Okay, what are the wishes of this commission?
I'm going to move for approval.
Subject to all comments.
Subject to any and all staff comments.
And Mr. Mulchamp's comments about no rental.
All comments.
Second.
Motion is made and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mulchamp. Item 4B is an annexation plan of services and annexation petition for approximately 2.29 acres located along Blaze Drive, Hope and Bo O'Brien are the applicants, Mr. Blomley, good evening.
Thank you, good evening Chairman Lamb, our next item on the agenda tonight is an annexation plan of services and annexation petition for 2.29 acres located along the northeast side of Blaze Drive, it's a long, narrow parcel that's situated directly in between the Blackman Farm subdivision and the Preservate Indian Creek subdivision, the owners of the property, Hope and Bo O'Brien, have submitted an annexation petition to have the property annexed into the city limits, there is a companion zoning request, which will be the subject of the next public hearing, and just for anybody that's out there in the audience, this first public hearing will be specifically for the annexation of the property, the study area is located within the city's urban growth boundary, and it is contiguous, as you can see, with the existing city limits on its north, south, and west sides, there is an existing accessory structure on the subject property, I'm told it's a horse barn, and the fire department has indicated that it cannot provide fire protection services to that structure upon annexation, so the, the owners of the property would be required to either remove or demolish that structure before the effective date of annexation, and according to the applicant, he is aware that that, or his representative has indicated that he is aware that that structure must go prior to the effective date of annexation. A plan of services has been included in the agenda materials for your consideration, and the plan of services indicated, indicates that especially considering its positioning relative to the existing city limits on three sides, it'll be a relatively easy annexation to effect, with the exception of fire protection, and that can be provided once that structure has been removed or demolished, sewer is available, water is available, and of course the other rolling city services such as police and solid waste are already in the area servicing the, the existing developments adjacent to the property, we need to hold a public hearing on this matter tonight of the annexation petition and plan of services, and then forward a recommendation to the city council, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Blomley? Do we have a presentation?
Not regarding the annexation, the, the applicant's representative may have some comments during the zoning presentation.
Okay, in that case, I'll open the public hearing, asking anybody to come forward pertaining to the annexation request. In that case, I'll close the public hearing, there's no questions from the planning commission, we're ready for a motion.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the plan of services and annexation petition.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion carries, item 4C, a zoning application for approximately 2.29 acres located along Blaze Drive to be zoned RSA type 2, simultaneous annexation, Catalyst Design Group is the applicant, Mr. Blomley.
Thank you Chairman Lamb, this is the same property that we just considered for annexation, this is the companion zoning request, Catalyst Design Group represented, represented by Mr. Jack Parker, who's in the audience tonight, has requested the zoning of this property to RSA type 2 simultaneous with annexation, and you'll recall that RSA type 2 is a new zoning classification adopted in 2017, residential, single-family attached, the suburban townhouse option, when someone requests the RSA zone for their property, they have to declare type 1, type 2, or type 3, type 1 is what we would have historically thought of as the RZ zone, the two-unit attached, type 2 is the suburban townhouse, and type 3 is the urban townhouse, which differs from the suburban townhouse in its, slightly in its, in its form, the RSA type 2 zone permits single-family attached dwellings at a maximum density of 12 dwelling units per acre, at 2.29 acres, assuming that acreage is correct, the maximum number of dwelling units that could be achieved is 27, however, once factoring in minimum development requirements, the actual yield might be less than that 27, the RSA type 2 zone allows buildings of between three and eight townhouses per building, and exterior materials are required to consist of a minimum of 75% brick, stone, or cementitious siding, and in addition, there are minimum open space and formal open space requirements for any townhouse development in the RSA type 2 zone, to the north of the subject property is the Preservate Indian Creek subdivision, which is zoned PRD, to the south of the subject property is the Blackman Farm subdivision, which is zoned PRD also, directly adjacent to the subject property to the south is common area from the Blackman Farm subdivision, open space, to the west of the subject property is the right-of-way of Blaze Drive, and further to the west is the Blackman Elementary School, which is zoned RS15, to the east of the subject property is the Deerfield Single Family subdivision, which is still in the unincorporated county, zoned RM in the unincorporated county, I believe, which is residential medium density, the, excuse me, the floodplain and floodway of Puckett Creek are also directly to the east of the subject property, and a small portion of the western part of the property is encumbered by the floodplain and floodway of Spent, or of Puckett Creek, so that will have an impact on, on development, development on this property will be required to meet our minimum requirements in the floodplain management ordinance, the future land use map contained in the Murfreesboro 2035 comprehensive plan actually recommends that the property develop as park open space, and an excerpt from the future land use map can be found on the screen in front of us, it's that green sliver, the plan describes this classification as all existing municipal parks, outdoor recreation areas, and open spaces that have been committed to public or private enjoyment or recreational pursuits, development types include public parks and open spaces, public recreation areas, and public or private lands within floodplain or stormwater management areas that are generally unsuitable for development, per the comprehensive plan, the only existing city zoning district that is consistent with this recommendation is P, Park, staff is unsure why the plan recommended the park open space land use character for this parcel, the city does not own the parcel, and there are no plans for the city to purchase the property as a, for a public park, a portion of the property is located in the floodplain, but this, this alone does not render the property unsuitable for development, and the planning commission will need to consider whether this is an appropriate instance to deviate from the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, planning commission will need to conduct a public hearing tonight and formulate a recommendation to the city council, I'll be happy to answer any questions, and Mr. Jack Parker of Catalyst Design Group, representing the applicant, is here tonight, if you would like to say a few words, or if you have any questions for him.
Okay, any questions for him? Okay, thank you, we might have some later, okay, I'll open the public hearing for this proposal, asking anybody to come forward that'd like to speak.
Evening, Corey Brown, 3819 Blaze Drive, left of the parcel, immediate opposite to it on Blaze. We moved to the, to the, I guess, almost two years ago, it took us over a year to find a home that didn't face or was not directly across from condominiums, a lot of the surrounding area does have those, so when we did find a home that was there appealing for us, the space behind it has a lot of open space as well as the space to the north of the parcel, I have two young boys, so that was very appealing for us, that we could take our boys across, and it be a park space, that's why we went for that area, to change it to condominiums, that doesn't look like it would go with the actual area, the water actually backs up behind 3819 in the open space, so very curious to see what their plan would be to actually combat that, because it goes through that creek, and it empties onto the other side of Blaze, and for, and that's what it, all the way open, and for construction to happen right now, I don't know if you've been in that area recently, when it rains, it gets backed up pretty significantly, and to change it from the green space that is now, we don't think would actually be with going with the neighborhood, or how we saw the neighborhood when we decided to purchase the home.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brown. Anybody else?
Yes, sir, my name's Shane Stone, I'm president of the Blackman Farm HOA's Board of Directors, and, you know, at this point, without seeing more, our questions are more kind of general, but one concern we did have does revolve around the flood zone, because we are upstream, so any, you know, any major development there does take out some of the overflow for Puckett Creek, so we would be interested in seeing hydrology or some other study on how that affects the detainage area for Blackman Farm.
Thank you, Mr. Stone.
Mr. Stone, would you mind giving your address for the record, please?
I'm sorry, I am at 205 Campfire Drive.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
My name's Robert Koch, I live at 719 Elderberry Way in Blackman Farm, without seeing a lot of detail about the construction and the appearance of, of the planned development, I have some concerns about the construction fitting in with the character of that area, it's all single-family residential units, 27 units on two acres of land, when you take out whatever is necessary for flood abatement, parking, garaging vehicles, seems to me to be an exceedingly high density for that very small piece of land sandwiched in, sandwiched in between two subdivisions of single-family housing, also parking would be a concern, similar to what we were talking about in, in the previous development, two bedrooms could end up with four cars, we have that now in Blackman Farm, and the, the width of the roads is barely sufficient to handle the parking, so I have concerns about that as well.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else?
My name is Lacey Wilkins, address is 3507 Blue Spruce Way, and I also serve as secretary for the Board of Directors for Blackman Farm, I think my main question probably pertains to what potential impact traffic, we already have a great deal of traffic since Blaze is a city street, people cut through there a lot, they speed, so we have concern about our children within the community, but that would just be my, my concern, and again, because there's limited detail to where the outlet may be for this development, just, just a thought for your consideration, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilkins. Anybody else?
Good evening, my name is Kelly Johnson, 374 Campfire Drive, our property is adjacent to the property that we're talking about this evening, and I too am concerned about the water flow, we are right next to the drainage ditch, and I'm concerned about where that water's going to go if they are able to build on that property, the park that's in the subdivision next to it floods fairly often with rain, and that, I think, is going to just drive water, of course, elsewhere, I also have two girls that attend Blackman High that walk on Blaze Drive, and it frightens me, the speeders, the amount of traffic of my girls getting safely to and from school, those are my concerns, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Anybody else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing, this public hearing and this proposal is pertaining to the zoning application for this property, it will have to go through a procedure before anything can ever be built there, Mr. Huddleston, maybe you could go over what would be next if this proposal is passed by the planning commission and city council. All of that is detailed in our zoning ordinance under site plan requirements, and city staff would review that very carefully. And this body, again, would see that site plan at a future Planning Commission meeting. Following that, then there would be the potential to apply for building permits to actually construct the units. I, I think maybe we could answer some of the specific questions addressed by the applicant, or by the, the speakers tonight. We did note this is in the floodplain, and Mr. Blomley did correctly note that they will have to comply with our local floodplain ordinance that does require protection of the flood-carrying capacity along Puckett Creek. And so, development consistent with that would also protect that flood-carrying capacity, as did Puckett Creek Crossing, I'm sorry, Indian Creek. Preserve at Indian Creek to the north and the Blackman Farm subdivision to the south. This development will also have to comply with stormwater quality and stormwater management requirements, and so they'll have a stormwater management area for the increased runoff generated by their property. And so with those development considerations in mind, the, the floodplain and drainage conditions there would be observed and managed as, as that development is reviewed. We have data from Blaze Drive. It's operating today at a Level B level of service based on the average daily traffic counts. The level of service in most roads goes up one, increases one, at least one grade during peak hour. So we would expect during peak hour, this is operating at a Level C. Occasionally, it may drag to a Level D during those bell times for the school, which, again, are acceptable levels of service. And then as we project out to the twenty forty year on the major transportation plan, those levels of service are maintained. So we do not see a significant degradation of the ability of Blaze Drive to serve this property either now or in the future from a, from a traffic standpoint. Mr. Koch, I believe, asked about parking. There is a requirement for parking based on the number of bedrooms and the number of units, and, and that'll be confirmed at the site plan stage before it comes back to this body for, for site plan consideration. And Mr. Blomley might have a note about the character and also the density that's permitted under the RSA Type II zoning.
Sure. RSA Type II zone permits a maximum density of twelve dwelling units per acre. As I mentioned before, especially with the size of the, the size and shape of the property, there, this may not, may not actually build out at twelve dwelling units per acre. And it's, it's rare that we see a townhome development built out at twelve dwelling units per acre. Usually, the sweet spot is between eight and ten dwelling units per acre for townhomes. But they would have the ability, if they could meet all other development requirements, to build out at twelve dwelling units maximum per, per acre for twenty-seven units. As I mentioned, there are minimum exterior material requirements in the RSA Type II zone of seventy-five percent brick, stone, or cementitious siding. Blackman Farm subdivision, the, the lots are, there's approximately, I believe the minimum lot size is about five thousand or fifty-five hundred square feet. And if I can recall my many years of reviewing permit applications from Centex and Pulte for Blackman Farm subdivision, I believe that the, the sides and the rear were allowed to be vinyl, and the front of the home had a minimum percentage of, of brick or stone, I believe. So, I forget what that percentage was. Preserve at Indian Creek, I would say those are likely in the order of six or seven thousand square feet, square foot lots. So ultimately, a five thousand square foot lot, you're looking at about, once you factor in roads, probably about five or six dwelling units per acre, seven if there, there's limited common space. Six thousand square foot lot, you're probably looking more along the lines of a max of about five, five and a half dwelling units per acre. So that, so the density is, is increased from, from the existing PRDs to the north and to the south. The RSA Type II zone, though, the types of units permitted are townhouses, but which would be for-sale units. You know, of course, as we discussed in the previous application, someone can purchase those units, just like they could purchase a home in Blackman Farm or the Preserve at Indian Creek, if, if those subdivisions are not restricted by covenant from rental, and someone could purchase a, an individual unit and use it as a rental unit, similar as single-family homes and townhomes can be throughout the city. So compatibility with the, with the adjacent subdivisions, I mean, you, you have a little bit more of a, of a dense, single-family detached paradigm for the area. Blackman Farm was really one of our, kind of the, the first of a wave of, of, or one of the first of a wave of more dense, single-family detached subdivisions that, where we started seeing the five thousand or fifty-five hundred square foot lots. And now we're seeing those on a fairly routine basis, those and six thousand square foot lots. So, you know, whether the density in the RSA Type II zone is incompatible with, with the subdivisions to the north and the south, this would be a matter of, for the Planning Commission to determine.
Matthew, the, the floodplain area, would that, assuming that it can't be built on, do they, are they allowed to use that area as their part of or meeting the green space requirement?
Yes, it could be used as, it could be used towards their open space requirement. But just to, just to clarify, floodplain can be developed.
Okay.
There are minimum requirements for, for elevating those structures so that they are above the, the hundred-year floodplain. As Mr. Huddleston mentioned, though, our engineering staff would take every precaution to make sure that the development complied with our floodplain management ordinance and did not increase, or did not alter the, the capacity of, of Puckett Creek. The floodway is a different matter. Structures and development in the floodway are generally prohibited. And there are certain instances where encroachment into the floodway may be prohibited, but that's on a very rare instance, and we certainly would not want to see any habitable structures located in the floodway.
Thank you.
Mr. Huddleston, I believe, is it your screen that scrolls through and shows what we see on ours? Would you scroll through this to show that one page that had the floodway showing on it? Please, sir.
Yes, thank you.
I think that's, the one, this is from the annexation study, which was also part of, of what we looked at as staff when we, when we developed those. The magenta, bright pink color is the floodway, and you can see the, the very western extent there, goes to the center of the creek, and a good bit of that is encumbered by the floodway. And, and Mr. Blomley mentioned, the floodway is generally considered a no-development area. The floodplain, which is the, the lighter green area adjacent, there's some developments permitted there. It does have to be elevated and protected from flooding. By preserving the floodway, we maintain the flood-carrying capacity of Puckett Creek. That helps, that, that helps make sure that Puckett Creek can carry the water it needs to carry in a, in a flooding situation.
So any access in and out of this site would more than likely not be down at that end near that floodway area or floodplain area?
The, the access this has to the public right-of-way would be to Blaze Drive.
Just go straight out to Blaze Drive.
Yes, and, and as Mr. Mulchan mentioned, sometimes there's some fudge factor rubber sheeting when you're overlaying maps from different varieties. We would require that the applicant submit a surveyed site plan that would, that would show the limits of the floodway, and then would, would be able to evaluate their ability to access Blaze Drive. In our initial reviews for that, we, we felt like Blaze Drive was available to the property with a properly designed exit.
Okay. Any other questions from the Planning Commission?
Mr. Huddleston, do you believe that there's potential that there could be a retention pond or a detention pond, or something put out there to help absorb some of that, to not make the situation worse, but to actually improve the situation of the water that might flood that area?
Yeah, a couple, a couple thoughts on that, Mr. Smotherman. Any, any of the adjacent properties that drain across this, those drainage patterns would be observed and honored, and so any water that's draining there would, would be able to continue to drain across this property. The, the design engineer would have the ability to, to use any of, a variety of stormwater management techniques. Retention, detention ponds would be some of those. What we also see is, is low, low-impact development, sometimes for these smaller developments. This is a, a two-acre plus or minus development, so they'd be able to, to use our small site option, which relies on permeable pavement and reduce impervious area as a main means of meeting our stormwater management ordinance. But they, they will have some level of stormwater management facilities here on their property.
Okay. Any other questions? Under the wishes of this commission.
You know, sometimes you wish you could see a site plan before you make an approval. Just a thought. Of course, they don't want to go to the expense of the site plan, I'm sure, without knowing a particular zoning has been approved.
Back to the old planned development days.
Yeah.
We're going, trying to get away from everything being a planned development, going back to some, you know, so I think that's part of what we get in the new zoning that we've got, with some of the, you know, conditions that we didn't have before, some of the building materials that are required, and, you know, quite a few different options on the Type One, Type Two, Type Three. You know, I think it's, still seems very limited as to what they might be able to do on there, but if, you know, I guess we're looking at the difference in five or six units per acre surrounding, and potentially eight or ten. Eight, eight to ten, I think is what you said. Possibly. Seems like that might be stretching it, too.
Okay, well, we need a motion one way or the other, to approve, disapprove, or defer.
I'll make a motion to approve subject any and all staff comments and other comments.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion's made and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Three ayes and one no, so the motion carries. Move on to item D. This is a zoning application amendment for Sunset Ridge PRD, approximately five point zero two acres, located along Warming Field Drive, O'Brien Lloyd LLC is applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. The subject property is the site of the Villas at Del Sol, which is a townhome development that is currently under construction. It's a part of the Sunset Ridge PRD Planned Residential District that was approved in two thousand and four. The Sunset Ridge PRD contains single-family residential lots, Everbright Point and Del Sol Commons, and single-family residential attached townhomes, the Villas at Del Sol that I just mentioned, and Aurora Place, which is already developed along Joby Jackson Parkway. The original developer of the, of Sunset Ridge is no longer active in the development of this property. Mr. Chip Lloyd is the, the new developer. He has taken the reins in finishing out this PRD. I believe that the single-family detached portion of the PRD, the Del Sol Commons subdivision, is, is nearing completion, and I believe they'll be pulling permits soon on the last section if they, if they haven't done so already. The Villas at Del Sol is the area in the, that's, has the hatch lines in it. This is one of the last components of the PR, overall PRD that has yet to be constructed. As I mentioned, it's currently under construction. As, as Mr. Chip Lloyd began developing the project and trying to craft his own vision for the property, there were some differences between his vision and the vision of the previous developer. In the two thousand and four pattern book, there was a twenty-five-foot-wide landscape buffer that was proposed around the perimeter of the Villas at Del Sol, which was called Sundust Retreat back in the original pattern book. However, the two thousand and four pattern book was somewhat ambiguous about the actual design of the landscape buffer. It just said twenty-foot, five, twenty-five-foot-wide landscape buffer. And, you know, in our, you know, if we were reviewing the, the pattern book today, we may say, well, you know, give us a type of landscape buffer, a type A, B, C, D, and E, because that's what we have benchmarks for in our, in our zoning ordinance, and what we can reasonably administer and our, and inspect, and, and know what we're looking for when we look at plans. Because this was kind of nebulous, and because the twenty-five-foot-wide requirement was just such a, just really consumed so much of the property, he proposes to change it to a standard ten-foot-wide Type B buffer around the perimeter of the development. And this will provide clarity for design and enforcement purposes, and will also consume less of the site. Really, that twenty-five-foot-wide buffer, because there were really no, no parameters on it in the two thousand and four program book, left his design team a little bit befuddled as to how to appropriately design that buffer, and how, how densely planted it should be. Should it be sparsely planted but twenty-five feet wide, or densely planted at twenty-five feet wide? So they're hoping to provide some clarity with this amendment. The two thousand and four pattern book also called for a white PVC fence around the perimeter of the development. What Mr. Lloyd would like to do instead would be to provide white PVC fences around the patios of the individual units, and not, I, I think he wants to do that anyway, and he doesn't want to duplicate it with a fence around the perimeter, another white PVC fence on top of a white PVC fence around the patios. The two thousand and four pattern book called for decorative streetlights and decorative street signs, and Mr. Lloyd seeks to amend the PRD to use city-standard streetlights and street signs within the development. There are private streets that, that are utilized in the development. Directly to the north of the subject property is a single-family residential estate lot, and by estate, I mean a large, single-family residential parcel in the unincorporated county. There is a vacant piece of property directly between this property and the east towards Manchester Pike. To the south is the Del Sol Commons. To the south and to the west is the Del Sol Commons subdivision, which is a part of the overall Sunset Ridge PRD. The Murfreesboro twenty thirty-five plan calls for this to develop as auto-urban general commercial. Not sure why it recommended that, because the land use entitlement has been in place for townhomes there since two thousand and four. So it does not appear that the twenty thirty-five plan took into account the existing land use entitlement for the property. Planning Commission will need to conduct a public hearing on this matter, and then formulate a recommendation to city council. I will be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Clyde Roundtree is present, if you have any questions for him, as is Mr. Lloyd, the developer.
Any questions from the Planning Commission?
Just, quick, are, are we, the number of units changing?
Nope. Thank you, Ms. Jones. That is something that I should have clarified. All other aspects of the PRD pertaining to this townhome element of it, and all the other portions of the PRD, the single-family and the other townhome development, Aurora Place, nothing else is changing except for the four. To the south is the Del Sol Commons. To the south and to the west is the Del Sol Commons subdivision, which is a part of the overall Sunset Ridge PRD. The Murfreesboro 2035 plan calls for this to develop as auto-urban general commercial. Not sure why it recommended that, because the land use entitlement has been in place for townhomes there since 2004. So it does not appear that the 2035 plan took into account the existing land use entitlement for the property. Planning Commission, we'll need to conduct a public hearing on this matter and then formulate a recommendation to City Council. I will be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Clyde Roundtree is present. If you have any questions for him, as is Mr. Lloyd, the developer.
Any questions from the planning commission?
Just, quick, are we, the number of units changing?
Nope. Thank you, Ms. Jones. That is something that I should have clarified. All other aspects of the PRD pertaining to this townhome element of it and all the other portions of the PRD, the single-family and the other townhome development, Aurora Place, nothing else is changing except for the four items that I enumerated in my staff comments.
Just because the footprint is different?
Yes, ma'am. And in fact, they've already, they already have a site plan approved for the development, and they're moving forward with construction. And this, these are some changes that, once Mr. Lloyd got out into the field and began constructing it, he saw that he wanted to make.
No other questions? Okay, I'll open the public hearing. I was going to ask him if I'd come forward, the lack speak.
Good evening. Kevin Fox. My address is 4056 Manchester Pike, and I own the property just north, so right across the fence to the property boundary of this development. I've met Mr. Lloyd, very nice gentleman, who introduced himself to me a little while back. On this, basically, the only concern I have is the buffer boundary that borders the property boundary to my property. First, of course, you want some privacy assurances. Second, just the screening of it, so there's not a negative property value impact to me next door, my neighbors who are inside of this. So the concern I have is just that when you go from 25 to 10 feet, that's over 50% reduction. Is that going to be sufficient to adequately screen? Because these are kind of tall buildings. They're two-story with harsh roofs. So we, me, my neighbors and I would really just like assurances that whatever buffer's there is of sufficient height and breadth to screen out, you know, screen out the condos and provide some buffer as to the increased, there's usually increased noise when you move densely, people into a dense area together, there's going to be an increase in noise. I mean, that's expected. And so that's the main issue. I think if there's an adequate buffer, it would solve the fence issue. I don't think you would need a fence around the perimeter or whatever. So as long as the buffer's adequate, I think that would solve the fence issue, and he could just do whatever he wants with the fencing. Because we don't want to unduly burden him, but again, we want to protect our privacy and our property values on our side of the fence. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Fox. Anybody else?
Good afternoon, council members. I'm Larry Fitzsimmons. I live at 3974 Manchester Pike. This is not the first change proposal that's been made to this since the beginning. I have horses. I've put up fireworks, loud parties, and everything else. I'm not trying to be a smart aleck toward anybody, but after everything I've put up with, so forth and so on, I don't think a 25-foot buffer is too much to ask. Thank you all.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else?
My name is Dylan Zemian. I'm at 1927 Warming Field Drive, the property that is to the southeast of the beginning of this development. I agree with the previous comments as far as keeping a 25-foot buffer, because the end of the property butts up almost right to my backyard, and we're actually at the end of the cul-de-sac that they've built into this neighborhood where all their drainage comes down right through our back, and so keeping a bigger privacy fence on it, I think, would help better to kind of block some of the noise from it. We're also concerned about the increased foot traffic coming from these units. If there isn't a good privacy fence setup, that people may start coming to cut through, because there is a convenience store on the other side of our neighborhood, they might start cutting through our yard to walk through out the front entrance of our neighborhood. So we're thinking something to kind of keep it blocked in, to kind of just help with privacy with us and the attached units at the front of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anybody else? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Roundtree?
Chairman Lamb, commissioners, my name is Clyde Roundtree, Hudson Steel Engineering. I'm here with Mr. Chip Lloyd, the developer. In response to the neighbors' concerns, those are valid concerns as far as that 25-foot buffer. That really is a distance buffer, and as Mr. Blomley described, it really wasn't defined in terms of what plant material would be included in that buffer. With the type B buffer, we're proposing, in essence, it's a double row of evergreens that are staggered. So over time, the neighbor should have a solid green wall. That's really the goal of that type of buffer. It's not a gap buffer. It's just really designed to be solid, and that can help with some of the, you know, potential penetration of kids, you know, migrating through that buffer as well. But the 10-foot standard is, as Matthew said, it gives more definition to what plants are actually put into that. So that plan has been, you know, is in process, so we've developed a plan for that. So we feel like we can accommodate their concerns with a buffer. Obviously, when buffers go in, they don't go in 20 feet tall, they go in more like a six-feet-tall situation, but the plants that are being chosen are designed to create a solid green division between the two developments. And Mr. Lloyd is committed to the buffer happening. As far as the privacy fence, we feel like it'd be more advantageous for the adjacent neighbors to have all the houses basically screened from them and actually have a physical divide between the backyards of these particular homes and the adjacent neighborhood as well. So both of the concessions we're asking for in the plan development booklet are, we feel like are advantageous for the adjacent neighbors, and Mr. Lloyd's communicated with them, and I feel like this is a better solution. And just for clarification, as far as the stop signs and the streetlights, the current subdivision, the Del Sol Commons subdivision, has the types of lights and types of street signs we're asking for to be amended in the book. So it's really to add consistency through the whole subdivision, so that when you drive through it, it doesn't change all of a sudden when you get back to these homes, that there's just a whole different kind of flavor. So that's kind of where that request came from. So if there's any other questions that you all may have, I'm here to answer them, but just want to bring some clarification on the buffer for the neighbors.
Questions from Mr. Roundtree. Clyde, let me make sure we all understand this. The 25-foot buffer as laid out and approved already, you know, approval right now, doesn't dictate what type of planning is supposed to be there, what density or what type or anything. Is that right?
Yes, sir. If you look on page two, and I've got it, page two of Mr. Roundtree's book, and I've got it pulled up on the screen, the top right corner of the page, all of the specificity that we have is, you'll see it says 25-foot landscape buffer and white PVC fence. That's all the detail that we have on that. Having a type of buffer, as we, quote-unquote, a type, as we have them in our zoning ordinance, gives a more defined buffer, something that's easier to regulate as far as, you know, when our urban environmental department is reviewing the landscape plan, having, and when our urban environmental department goes out to inspect the buffer, and so whether that's a type B buffer or some other type of buffer, it just makes it easier for the purposes of administration and enforcement.
Chairman Lamb, I might add just this practical observation, and Mr. Roundtree, correct me if I'm wrong, but the buildings are not moving. The space between the buildings and the development and that property line is still the same as it was, so the space is still there. What this adds to it is some detail on plantings. There's an existing, and it may be a 20, a 25, or a 30-foot sewer easement along that north line, so that's a no-build easement for structures. The structures will not physically move any further than they currently are, and so that space, that 25-foot space will still be maintained. The separation that was there still be maintained. The plantings will be detailed now according to the type B buffer and their proposal.
I think the structures are actually about 50 feet off of the, 40 or 50 feet off of that northern property line, if I'm not mistaken.
Correct. So a 10-foot type B buffer would specify the planting materials, subject to the city's approval, to be put in there that would actually give them some screening, where right now all you have is a six-foot privacy fence, and he could do a few shrubs and call that a landscape.
I think that the intent of the original PRD book, you know, we would want it to provide some type of landscape buffer, so more than a few shrubs, but it's kind of open for interpretation.
Yeah.
I think we would want it to provide some type of screening.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Mr. Roundtree, you mentioned that the plantings would be about six foot at the planting time. How long does it take for them to reach maturity or reach 10-foot?
There's a lot of conditions on that, Mr. Smotherman, but I, you know, usually they say the first year they sleep, the second year they just kind of stays stagnant, and then they leap in the third year. So over the course of five years, you're probably getting, you know, more of an eight-to-10-foot kind of look out of those. It's, you know, pruning habits and growth conditions and those kinds of things would have an impact on that. But I think the goal with that type of buffer is to make sure that they're, you know, they're, basically, there's a double row, so it really does, the goal is to really fill it in. You know, with not just one single type A kind of row, but with the double, it just provides some assurances that that whole 10 feet of that buffer will be full of plant material versus more of just a solid, single row of line of green.
I could pass this around. These are the cross-sections, and so as you're evaluating what type of buffer you think might be appropriate, these are the cross-sections that are actually in our zoning ordinance that our urban environmental department uses to make sure that the buffers that are proposed meet the requirements of our zoning ordinance.
Well, I personally think the type B buffer with the 10-foot setback would be more protection than the 25-foot with no specifications as to what's going to be planted there. I think the questions go boiled down in my mind about the fence. We want to relieve the developer of the responsibility of constructing the fence and replacing that with patio screening fences, or do we want to go to the 10-foot buffer and keep the fence?
Clyde, to Bob's comment, and the gentleman, I can't, sorry, I can't remember his name, but he talked about the pedestrian traffic to convenience stores. Is that the Dollar General we're speaking of or something different? Okay. So, I mean, is there, besides still requiring a perimeter fence around this whole development, is there anything that you could think of that we could impede people from the foot traffic to going there? You follow me in cutting through somebody's yard, you know?
Sure. Again, I think initially, you know, that, you know, when the buffer's planted, it's not going to be so dense that it would prohibit movement potentially through it, but I think as it grows in, it's much more mature to walk through a mature buffer. And then the fencing, again, I think Mr. Lloyd is really trying to accomplish the goal of, you know, win-win with both the people who own the homes, which just gives them a much more private feel by having a perimeter courtyard kind of type of patio fencing, and it allows the neighbors who are adjacent to have no, there's no visible activity, because all the activity behind these homes would be screened from them, and I think it'd just give a little bit more of a green space, open space type of feel in both directions. They're looking at a landscape buffer versus a solid fence, and the neighbors, the neighbors are looking at landscaping versus fencing, and the residents have containment around their yards and no visual to the neighbors adjacent and vice versa. So again, the answer is, until that buffer's mature, you know, there is a chance for some migration between properties, but that may be something that's realistic or hypothetical. It's hard to say.
Can y'all clarify for us the fence? Is it, I mean, in the original plan, is the fence just on that back line, or does it come down, is it all the way around this section?
And that's part of the confusion is, I mean, if you look at that, at the inset, what's in the red rectangle, you know, there's an area along the southern border of this property that doesn't show the green, which you would think would be an indication of where the buffer would be, and it's unclear where the fence is proposed to be located, too. So I think kind of, we've tried to err on the side of caution and have them provide buffering around as much of the side as we can and fencing around as much of the side as we can, knowing that what was in the 2004 pattern book is a little bit unclear. And for example, if you look at the larger plan to the left, there's an area of the driveway behind units 6R through 7L along Warming Field Drive, lot 6R through 7L, which there's not 25 feet, it's only about 10 feet wide right there. So there's no way at that point to get a 25-foot-wide buffer there. 10 feet is the most they can do, and that's, and that distance is not movable, because that's part of the approved site plan.
People on the planning commission in 2004 didn't do a very good job on this.
Wish I knew who it was on.
Whoever they were.
I know.
Okay.
The only, I'll make one last comment about this, going back and forth with Dollar General. This is just personal experience. My wife and I own a home that backs up to villages of Prestwick and Rutherford Boulevard, and we, as neighbors, built a fence on Rutherford Boulevard just for a screening purpose, but ours was the corner lot. And, I mean, people were going, there's churches on Rutherford Boulevard, and I don't know if that's where they were headed, but people, we had, we literally had a path in our yard until we put a dog there, where people were walking through our yard to get to Rutherford Boulevard. I think they were just getting there to walk the sidewalk, just to be quite honest with you. But that, you know, and then we ended up putting a fence up with the gate locked it so people couldn't get through there. So I just, somehow, I think we need to impede that, because I think that's going to be a natural, something that's going to happen naturally. I don't know what that is.
Mr. Halliburton might just add a little something. Our office also reviews fence permits, and I just checked the 2017 era photograph. About half the lots that are existing single-family there along Warming Field are fenced today. That number is likely to go up. It's not a full barrier along those single-family residential, but I do note that several of the lots, existing lots already have fences along their rear lot line, both to the south and to the west. And then I think Mr. Roundtree would back this up as well, that that double row of evergreens is going to be a pretty good barrier to wanting to try to walk through there. When you look at where the Dollar General is relative to these, this unit, there's not much advantage of, on time and distance to walk through somebody's backyard versus actually following the sidewalk and road path out to Manchester Pike. There's a good bit of distance in between. Not saying they won't do it, but they really don't gain much advantage by doing that.
And there will be an internal sidewalk network in the Villas at Del Sol that will lead back out the driveway to Warming Field Drive to get pedestrians back out of the development.
Mr. Blomley or Mr. Huddleston, when we have these buffers like this, and they're going to put in this type B buffer, how long does the, or does the city go back for some length of time to confirm that, you know, the buffer, they're all living and, or if they, you know, eight of the 10 die?
I think you called Mr. Blomley out first, so.
Who wants?
If I can add anything to it, I'll join in.
The buffer is required to be maintained in perpetuity. If it's not maintained in perpetuity, then it's a violation of the zoning ordinance, and whoever has ownership, whether it's the developer or whether it's the, whether it's the homeowners' association, is responsible for keeping that buffer up. And we do hold bonds on that buffer for a certain period of time. I think it's... of time. I think it's three years.
Three years, yeah. Three-year maintenance.
And so, by that point, when our urban environmental department goes out to inspect to make sure that the buffer is in good shape, you know, they hold that bond until, and if it doesn't, they won't release that bond until it's made whole. But even beyond that point, it would be a violation of the zoning to let it fall into disrepair.
Thank you.
Sam, am I of the impression that you're saying most of the homes on Warming Field Drive have fences across the back of them currently?
Some of the homes along Warming Field, and I think, is it Warming Field that continues around the corner, but some of the homes have fences there, and we've reviewed and approved several applications in there. Personally, I know that we have. And so, the single-family homes have already, many have already fenced. I say half, and there are spots where there's a very consistent patch, and then there are some others where three or four, five lots are side-by-side with no fencing.
Are they using the white PVC fence as well?
Actually, I think they're using a variety, but I think they are required in the PUD to have decorative fencing of some type. I don't recall approving chain link. I'm going to see if Mr. Lloyd recalls what the PUD has out there for that.
My name's Chip Lloyd, 2710 Battleground Drive. I'm the developer of Dillsoul. I'm the developer of the Villas at Dillsoul also, as well as other developments that are very, very, very similar to what we're doing at the Villas at Dillsoul. Now, the individual housing, they have different types of fences that they're putting up. Some are PVC, some are wood. You know, it's kind of whatever the customer wants to do on that. For our townhomes, going with the buffer that Matthew and I have talked about, it's going to be much better than a 25-foot buffer with just a couple bushes in there. And to answer your question, Mr. Ken, the Dollar General is kind of, you've got to go through the entrance to get to the Dollar General. Basically, what we want to do, and I've talked to the gentleman behind me that owns the Joining acreage, we want to put in a nice buffer that's going to grow in nice. And to answer your question, Mr. Jones, it takes about three years for these things to grow in. You know, you put them in, but the way that the city has engineered these buffers, they grow together quite nicely. They almost form a fence. And the buffer that we're talking about putting up is basically a buffer that takes the place of a fence. So, what I would like to do in this development is put the fences where they're needed to shield people's, whatever's on their patio, whatever, you know, their kids' toys and whatever, this, that, and the other, and not have two fences. Because if I have to do one fence around the perimeter of this, then I'm not going to have the money to put the fences up against the individual units, which the customers want. It provides them security, especially women who buy these townhomes. Women buy 80, roughly 80% of these townhomes, and they like to be able to have a gate and put a lock on it, and they have that sense of security. And it also keeps people from stealing the stuff that's on their patio. So, I'll answer any questions that you have, but I've done several of these developments like this, and doing the nice buffer and then putting the fences behind the units, it seems like an A-plus deal, and it's a win-win deal for them, and it's a win-win deal for the customers that buy. So, if anybody has any questions, I'll happily answer.
Mr. Lloyd, if you do the fence behind the unit like that, who owns the fence and who is in charge of maintaining it?
Okay. The fences will be PVC fences, just like the fence that we're talking about putting out there. Now, in this particular development, and I wanted to bring this up, we're using tans and browns and those type colors. So, I may change the color of the fence to like a dark brown, so it will match with the development. It's all earthy colors. So, to answer your question, the HOA takes care of all the fences. If they need to be, basically, when you buy a townhome, you basically only own the inside. The outside columns of your townhome are done by the HOA. The fences are handled by the HOA. The bushes, et cetera, the landscaping, all the grass mowing. Plus, another thing, if you put the fences up against the patio, then you get to see the nice grass that's behind the units, et cetera. It all grows together quite nicely, in fact, better than I thought it would. And the ones that we've done in the past, and I've done quite a few of these developments, they've worked out quite well. So.
Any questions from Mr. Lloyd?
Thanks.
Okay. What are the wishes of this commission?
Chairman Lamb, one thing that I did want to note is that Mr. Lloyd mentioned that he might deviate from the white PVC fence and use other earth tones. The white is actually written into the pattern book, so I think that he would need to get y'all's blessing on that, if you're okay with him deviating from that, from that white fence, because that's actually written into the book.
Page two, it says, just PVC fences. Where does it say white?
It's on page one. There's a list of four things on the left-hand side of the page.
I would like to use a tan or a dark brown PVC fence, six feet, just like what's in the book. Just maybe change the color to kind of match the buildings and the earthy tones.
So, with earth tone PVC?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
I'll make a comment, and then if there's other comments. After hearing all the comments, and it sounds like, based upon how people would access to the Dollar General, I'm okay with not having to have a perimeter fence. The white versus earth tones, I think it kind of makes sense for the fence to look similar to the look of the exterior of the structure. So, changing that, I don't have any issues with. The decorative streetlights, I don't have any issues with either. I think that by getting a concrete definition of what this buffer is going to be is in everybody's best interest. The distance between buildings hasn't changed, meaning between the backside of a building and the neighbor, so that hasn't been affected. So, unless there's other comments, I'll make a motion that we approve these changes with the fact of allowing him to have earth tone color associated with the fence itself.
I'll second the motion.
Motion is made, and seconded. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. The final public hearing tonight is a zoning application for approximately 6.8 acres located along Dill Lane to be rezoned from RS-10 to RSA Type II JCT Contracting LLC is the applicant. We have a little bit of a quandary here. I will not be able to participate in the discussion or vote on this matter, because one of the principals is a business partner of mine. So, I will go ahead and conduct the meeting, but I will not be able to vote on it or participate in the discussion. However, with me not being able to vote on it, we do not have a quorum present. So, we will not be able to vote on it here at this body tonight. But, of course, we advertised the public hearing, and we have people here that might want to speak. We'll go ahead and conduct the public hearing and record your comments, and then let the rest of the planning commission review those comments and then vote on it at a future time. That being said, Mr. Blomley, you want to lead us into this discussion?
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. And pulled out our handy-dandy rules of procedure during the first public hearing, in which I was not involved, and it actually says that if there are not enough members to vote, then it automatically is deferred. So, we'll conduct the public hearing. For anybody who's interested in the audience tonight, we'll conduct the public hearing, close the public hearing, and then because of a lack of number of members here, the item will automatically be deferred until our next meeting. So, I'll go ahead and give a presentation for the planning commission and the members of the audience here tonight, and then we'll conduct the public hearing.
So, Mr. Blomley, then we have no discussion after the public hearing?
I think, I think.
Or answer any other questions?
No, I think we can definitely have discussion.
Okay.
We just cannot make a motion and vote on the item.
We don't have to move to defer, apparently. He said it's automatically deferred.
Okay.
Correct, correct.
Proceeding, Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Chairman Lamb. This item is located, this is a rezoning request located along the west side of Dill Lane. It's currently zoned RS-10 and is developed with a church and a single-family residence. However, the backside of the property is mostly undeveloped. The applicants have the property under contract and have requested that the property be rezoned to RSA Type II. In one of the previous public hearings, I described the RSA Type II zone, which is, which allows a maximum of 12 dwelling units per acre, and it's the suburban townhouse version of the single-family attached zoning district. So, at approximately 6.8 acres, the maximum number of dwelling units that could be achieved is approximately 80, if it was built out at the maximum 12 dwelling units per acre. However, I will insert a caveat that the exact number of units that the proposed zoning will allow cannot be determined until a precise acreage has been provided. There's a little bit of a difference between what the applicant has provided us and what the property assessor has in their records. Also, it's likely that we would require dedication of right-of-way for Dill Lane, because it's a substandard road. I believe we did the same thing on Richland Falls to the north. So, that would further reduce the yield with the dedication of right-of-way. All that to say, the approximate number of units that could potentially be developed is around 80. In the, in this zoning district, each building facade is required to consist of a minimum 75% of brick, stone, or cementitious siding, and there are minimum open space and formal open space requirements in the RSA Type II zone. The property to the north is a PRD. It's an apartment complex called Richland Falls. It stretches all the way from Dill Lane to, back to Atlas Street. To the east of the subject property, across Dill Lane are the Robins Nest and Villas at Rutherford Townhome Developments, which are both zoned RM16 multifamily. To the south and east are the Dill Lane and Grace Cove single-family subdivisions, both of which are zoned RS-10. And also directly to the south along Dill Lane is a single-family residential parcel that contains several outbuildings and is also zoned RS-10. Future land use map contained in the Murfreesboro 2035 comprehensive plan depicts a future land use classification of public and institutional. No doubt, when considering what the future land use category should be, the existing land use, the church that sits on the property, was factored into making that decision. The plan describes the public institutional classification as including improved parcels and facilities that are held in the public interest and are usually exempt from real property taxation, and indicates that some of the appropriate development types are municipal and other government buildings, schools, colleges, universities, hospitals, medical centers, et cetera. The planning commission will need to determine whether or not this is an appropriate instance to deviate from the recommendation of the future land use map. It appears that the future land use map and the comprehensive plan did not contemplate the potential redevelopment of this property with a different land use, such as what is being proposed. The planning commission will need to conduct a public hearing and then formulate a recommendation to the city council. Of course, that will have to happen at a future meeting. The rules of procedure state that it would be brought up under old business at the next meeting, which would be next Wednesday, July the 18th. I'll be happy to answer any questions before or after the public hearing, and Mr. Clyde Roundtree and Mr. Jeremy Tabor are here representing the applicant.
Any questions from Mr. Blomley? Okay. Mr. Roundtree, do you have anything at this time? Okay. I'll open the public hearing. I'm asking if I had to come forward that would like to speak.
Good evening. My name is James Carney. I live on 2091 Horn Castle Drive. I actually laid that property back right up to my property. I was just wondering what was they going to do about the rainwater that come off of Hole Beach and the bottom half of Dill, Horn Castle. It goes to that field. And another question I have, what is they going to do for the road, Dill Lane itself? Are they going to widen it or leave it as is?
Yes, sir. We'll have the staff answer those after the public hearing. Thank you very much, sir. Anybody else?
Hi. My name's Terry Stegall. I live at 614 Dill Lane and also own the property at 618. And north of Murky, also on 212 Dill Lane, is having townhouses built next to it. I'm just opposed to more apartments or townhouses being built on Dill Lane. There's enough of them there as it is, and it's just going to have a negative impact on the quality of life of people that have been living there all along. I've got problems at 212 Dill Lane with the townhouses there with flooding. And they built up that property, four or five feet, which caused it to flood my property. And the engineering department agreed something should be done about it, but nothing has been done yet. I don't want anything like that happening at this new thing that they're proposing. Guess that's all I've got to say for now.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Anybody else? Okay. I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Roundtree, can you answer the questions?
Chairman Lamb, Commissioners Clyde Roundtree and Huddleston still engineering. To the best of our knowledge, we've done some preliminary design on this particular site, and as Matthew mentioned, 80 units is really a viable option, it looks like, based on everything we know. But based on the site plan that we've already kind of generated, there's an ample amount of green space that we can accommodate for some of the drainage concerns that Mr. Carney had. Obviously, with Mr. Huddleston's impacts, as far as the engineering department, all that has to be respected. And what I've learned from Sam in many regards, a lot of times development, whenever development comes, you know, the city has no influence on those particular lots where they're low or drainage issues are appearing, until we have the ability to manipulate them through a site plan. So, we would do our best, you know, within the means we have available on our site to accommodate the concerns that the neighbor had with drainage. As far as Dill Lane, working with city staff, we already know that there's going to be some dedication for right-of-way that will be accompanied with this development. So, we feel confident that that's another issue that will be dealt with through the site planning process. And the last thing, I think, as far as Mr. Tabor's concerned, I think he's found a piece of property that would be really a nice transition between the apartments that are currently there, the Richland Falls apartments, and the neighbors, the neighbors on Honey Beach Drive, their lots are really deep. And so, I think that the, you know, it's not a lot that's probably going to develop for just, you know, RS-10-type single-family. We're not seeing a lot of those type developments anyways. So, I feel like we can provide some different types of open space and green space with the units we're proposing, based on how the site plan's laying out. And I know in my mind's eye, what's already been developed is, there'd be very few units that would face, you know, against that property line that's been mentioned, and so we could make sure that there's not really a back-to-back kind of relationship. They'd be perpendicular to the adjacent property line. So, with that in mind, I think we can meet the needs of drainage. They're concerned. I think Dill Lane's expansion is something that has already been addressed with the staff. If there's any questions for me, I'm glad to answer those.
Any questions?
I was going to ask the staff, either Mr. Blomley or Mr. Huddleston, about the reference Mr. Stegall had to the new development that had caused the drainage on one of his properties to be worse than it was before. Are we aware of that? He says we are.
I will defer that one to Mr. Huddleston.
I thought you might get that one, Mr. Huddleston.
I was thinking he would take it. I'm vaguely aware that Mr. Stegall had filed a complaint with our office. I don't recall, quite honestly, the resolution to it at this point, but I do know an inspector from our office went out and reviewed that, and so we do have a record of his complaint. I cannot verify that we said something should be done, because generally, when we conclude that, then... conclude that, um, then we, we generally take action if it's related to the property owner, the development. We could've concluded that something should be done, might've been something that Mr. Stegall needed to use, uh, 'cause I know over the years we've looked at some of the, uh, development plans and, and remodeling plans for his property, uh, and I do recall that, that maybe there were some undersized pipes through there, but, uh, but I don't, uh, I, I, I don't know i- if the s- engineering department concluded action should be taken, whose responsibility it was to take it.
Is that something we can get back with him on?
It, it, he should have. I mean, I, and, and yes, Mr. Halliburton, we can get back with him. I'm, I'm quite confident we already have, in fact, that he had, had made the statement that the engineering department made a recommendation on, on that. Uh, but I will, I will check on the resolution of, of that drainage complaint.
You may be checking with Mr. Huddleston after the meeting, sir. He might be able to help you. Get some phone numbers or something.
I do think that normally, you know, I, I feel pretty good, and I tell a lot of people a lot of the time, that normally development improves drainage problems that might be existing because as opposed to just running wherever it wants to, there's some, you know, plan to it.
Control to it.
Normally, that's what we say, but I felt bad hearing, uh, if a, a new development was causing an issue, then I wanted to make sure we're, we're aware of that.
Is there any other discussion at this time?
Are there any, where are we on the roadway as far as, uh, would there be sidewalks extended, um, down, uh, through this area and would the roadway be, uh, amended to accommodate more traffic?
So I'll, I'll give a generic answer, Mr. Smotherman. I, I did not attend the pre-application conference with, um, uh, with Mr. Roundtree and, and Mr. Tabor, uh, but I'm quite confident that, that our staff talked to them about the substandard condition of, of Dill Lane. Substandard does not mean unsafe, simply means that Dill Lane does not meet our expectations for road elements as, um, for the type of street it is. And that generally involves curb and gutter and sidewalk and width of, uh, width and number of travel lanes. Uh, as we have, um, north of there on Dill Lane, we've required developers to construct improvements. Our first choice on substandard streets is to see some level of constructed improvement. Um, 80 units on this road, um, probably, probably warrants the left turn lane in. Uh, so we, we, I'd like to, uh, have the ability to, to talk with Mr. Uh, Roundtree and, and, and his client about, uh, where those roadway construction, roadway improvements are constructed now or if they're, uh, they're given the opportunity to do fees in lieu of construction, uh, for a future project by the city. Um, the, the difficulty there is we don't have a, a pending project on Dill Lane, uh, and, and so we're gonna prefer the constructed improvements where possible, uh, to at least get some wider travel lanes there and, and the possibility of a left turn in. Uh, and, and, and so I would make that, that general statement. I'm not sure if Mr. Roundtree has a statement about anything that was, that was discussed at the pre-application meeting.
Mr. Roundtree, you were at the meeting. What was discussed?
Nothing definitive was determined. It was determined that right-of-way would have to be, you know, compensated for on the site plan. So the site plan does reflect, you know, a really pretty substantial front setback from the, you know, where the, the townhomes would start. Um, as far as, uh, there wasn't a commitment either way from the developer or from the city to say this is what has to be done, but we know that would be part of the process as we move forward on site plan, and, um, that was brought to the attention. And I think that the developments further up the street, like Sam has mentioned, they've, they've had to do some road improvements, so, uh, Mr. Tabor's aware of that. We just don't have any definition of what that is exactly, whether it's a sidewalk, curb and gutter, widened street, uh, left turn lane. It hasn't been specifically defined.
Any other questions from Mr. Roundtree?
Mr. Roundtree, I, I'll just finish up with a comment. I, I think the precedent's already been set on Dill Lane coming from Mercury, uh, of what would be expected as far as the roadway. I don't think it's an in lieu of situation because with no roads planned there, uh, I don't see that that benefits the neighborhood or the people who live down that roadway. So, uh, I would expect there to be, um, sidewalks and road widening put in place, uh, with, in conjunction with the project.
Thank you, Mr. Roundtree. Anything else? There's no further discussion then. We'll defer this to the next meeting and we'll bring it up in our old business. Okay?
Yes, sir.
Um, that completes the public hearing portion of our agenda tonight. Uh, I have one thing. Uh, did you have anything else?
Just, just for the benefit of the, of the folks who are, who are here for, for that particular item, our next planning commission meeting will be next Wednesday, the 18th, at 1:00 PM in, uh, in, uh, room 218 of, uh, of City Hall. Um, that will not be a public hearing, but it will be a public meeting, and anybody who wishes to see the outcome and the discussion of that item of old business are welcome to do so.
Okay. Mr. Whitaker, are you still, are you awake? Uh, would you come up to the podium, please, sir? I wish the full planning commission was here tonight so they could have one last shot at you. But, uh, for those of you who might not know, Mr. Whitaker was recently, uh, elevated to the position of Assistant City Manager and Director of Community Development, Economic Development, is that correct?
Economic Development.
I can't get all these terms exactly right, but, uh, uh, Mr. Whitaker stepped into this role in the planning department about three and a half years ago, I believe, and coming in from longtime planning director Joseph Atealot, and he was somewhat drafted into this position, I believe, uh, kicking and screaming, but he came in and was immediately a huge success. He has been wonderful to work with, uh, great knowledge, great people skills, uh, and just has done a tremendous job with the staff as well. And, uh, I know, I can only speak for myself, but I think the sentiment of the planning commission will be the same. We appreciate what you've done while you've been here, and I'm certainly glad you're staying on with the city and will continue to help move this city forward. We've got so many things and positive items going forward for us, uh, over the next few years, and this is a critical time that we, we need to be looking ahead, and you have the vision that, that will certainly take us to where we need to be. And I'd like to hear from the other planning commission members, uh, as well. Ms. Jones?
Well, we were honored to work with you for the last three and a half years, and you've done a wonderful job. We appreciate everything you've done, and I'm just thrilled to know that you're not leaving the city and you're moving on up and still gonna be involved in what we're doing. So, thank you for sticking around. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Councilman, do you have anything you'd like to say?
Gary, you've done a phenomenal job, uh, in the planning role, and, uh, we, uh, we expect the same, uh, at, at the, uh, the new position. And, uh, I think that, um, the desire to have you in that position was because of the phenomenal, uh, transition that I think that you've made within our department, uh, as far as the planning. And I think that it's a, um, it's your people skills, it's your ability to communicate with your staff, and it's also, more than that, the ability to communicate with the public and, and, uh, convey to them, um, what the overall plan is and, and why it may or may not at their, at that time seem advantageous to them or advantageous to them. Uh, but, uh, you've, you've done such a phenomenal job. Uh, I think you're well deserved of your new, uh, promotion and, uh, look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Mr. Halliburton?
I, I'll just make the comment that, uh, I, I don't remember how many years I've been on this planning commission, but I would say in the last three and a half years of your tenure as the, as the planning director, we have as co- accomplished in, as much in a short period of time as we have, uh, since I've been on here, uh, which is reflective of you, it's reflective of, uh, your thought process as to what needs to happen in this city, and I'm glad that you're still have your hand in it.
I would, uh, well, I tell ya, I may have set the bar too high for myself for the future. I may have not tried, tried much as hard if I'd have known, uh, but thank you, those are very kind words, and I must say that this planning commission has been wonderful to work with. Y'all took the time and the patience to teach somebody that, uh, as Mr. Lamb said, got drafted in, and it was kinda ironic. I said, uh, I don't ever remember applying for the job, but either way, either way, I think drafting it was a good one, but, uh, it has been truly an honor to work, uh, with this, and I hope that I will continue to work, uh, as economic development, hopefully bringing, uh, some new exciting, uh, ventures back to, to you and looking into the future for the growth of our city and redevelopment of our downtown. Uh, one of the things that, uh, enticed me to stay was there's so much opportunity and so many things that we have coming up in the near future that, to me, is exciting. Uh, having an opportunity to, if you will, sit in the catbird seat, being born, raised here and being a part of the community and, uh, getting, getting to see all the, uh, the growth and the development and, uh, and the people I get to work with, it's, it's truly... I tell people, I'm, I'm really not sure that, uh, or why I'm getting paid to do this, 'cause I'm having too much fun, but, uh, but it is a lot of fun, and thank you. I really appreciate it and look forward to the new opportunities.
Thank you again, Gary. And I'd be remiss to not add that our good friend, Mr. Sam Huddleston, has also taken another position as Executive Director of the Development, uh-
Help me with that, Sam.
Uh, Mr. Tyndale coined a, a title for that, Executive Director of Development Services.
Right, you go.
Uh, really sounds like something you ought to wear a suit and tie to, but, but I tell you, Mr. Lamb, it's, it's, it's really continuing to do what I've, what I've done in the past in, in the areas of development, just with a little bit more of a leadership role. And, um, and as Mr. Whitaker said, uh, the planning commission's been, uh, very enjoyable to work with and mayor and council very enjoyable to work with, and we look forward to continuing that relationship. And then not, making some good improvements to the process and, um, and, and so we've got, uh, we've got a pretty big challenge ahead of us, but, uh, I'm looking forward to working with that.
You did a fabulous job in the engineering department, and I know you'll continue to do so there. Earlier I was struggling with this title. He said I could just call him Mr. Executive Director, so.
Chairman, I-
That's what I'll continue to do.
I would like to, I'd be remiss by not pointing out that I really had the easy job with the staff. I can't say enough things about our planning staff that has, uh, our entire city staff, but, but getting to work with the planning staff, they do a tremendous job. They have, as anybody knows in this city, the growth that we have and, and the workload they have and what they're able to, to do with the staff that we had is phenomenal, and it's been an honor to work with them as well. So, thank you.
You've got some good people. And thank you again, Gary and Sam. We appreciate it. Mr. Blomley, do you have any other business?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Ives?
Well, Mr. Chairman, I thought this was going to be a roast, but I, but I guess not. Thank you, Gary.
We had to keep it G-rated. No Don Rickles stuff, so. There's no other business, we stand adjourned.